Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call this regular city council meeting to order. It's December 6, 2021. And may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez? Absent. Councilmember Haquez?
Present.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher? Absent. Councilmember B. Smith?
Here.
Mayor Protem Hammack?
Here.
Mayor Smith? Absent.
And I believe Mayor Smith sends her regrets. She was unable to make it tonight for some circumstances beyond her control, I think. So, but we look forward to seeing her again. And we also have Nelson Hoover here from the Skyline Mennonite Church. And would you like to start us off with an invocation, please?
Thank you, and good evening. I want you to know it's an honor to be here tonight. You're prayed for either way, but tonight I get to do it in person, so that's an honor. Second Chronicle 714 says, "If my people who are called by my name will humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven and forgive their sin and heal their land." And many of us know someone that needs healing if we don't. So I'm going to pray for that tonight. Father, I thank you for these men and women that have given up their time to serve and to benefit their community. For the council, for the city staff that's here, would you bless them? And Father, by the decisions that are made tonight, first of all, we ask you forgiveness for the things that we have not followed your ways. And we know that you will hear us, and I pray that you will begin to lead them through the decisions that they make tonight to bring healing in the areas of our community, whether it's physical or emotional or spiritual. Father, we trust you. I pray for wisdom and discernment for whatever's on the agenda tonight. Father, there could be generations of impact that happens with the decisions that are made here. So give them wisdom, give them clarity of thought. I pray that you would protect their families while they're here. Bless them for the way that they have served. Jesus, we lift you high, we honor you, in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, we set aside time for any citizens that wish to address the council. And it doesn't look like we have anybody wishing to do that. That's on matters, not on the agenda. We do have a couple of requests for matters on the agenda, and we'll get to those as we go along. And do we have some council member announcements? Mandy? No? Okay. We do have a general government meeting this Wednesday, followed by Urban Renewal Authority Meeting. The general government starts at 5:00. We'll be here in these chambers, followed at 6:00 by the Urban Renewal Authority Meeting. And now we turn to recognitions and proclamations. And Chief Schick, would you like to come up and address us?
Good evening, Mayor Protem Hammack and members of council. I wanted to take a little time this evening before the end of the year to recognize some individuals that are absolutely a credit to service excellence, our motto by this city, and ask that we join the Canyon City Police Department in recognizing their exemplary performance of Elijah Owens. Come on up, Elijah. Dirk Allen and Dave Rodenbeck. Please come on up. While I recognize the significance of each of our departments and the role that they play in contributing to the PD's successes, like Streets this past weekend when we did the parade, I do want to recognize these three individuals in particular because we lean on them a little more often, I would say. Elijah routinely goes above and beyond in all of our technological pursuits, of which there are many this day and age in the law enforcement field. Elijah is always available and eager to assist us, assist our agency in advancing our cause. He is our 911 call for technological assistance. And as Rex Brady clearly illustrated today, he's real good at resetting passwords, usernames of passwords. But we rely on him a lot, and that's an understatement. Dirk and Dave, however, are 911 call for everything else, and I mean everything else. From the fumigation of the PD when we have a COVID outbreak to a drippy sink or heating and air complaints and setup and breakdown for special events like our National Night Out and, you know, more recently when we renamed and rededicated the police building in honor of Chief Stefanic. If it weren't for them, I don't know how we would make these things happen. So it, aside from those events, I'd also, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't point out that their collective labor has saved the city just this year alone with the renovations of the PD annex, nearly $50,000 in what would have been contractor services if it weren't for their expertise. So in this light, I want to thank each of them for their contributions to Canyon City's public safety via our agency and present each of them with chief's commendation here this evening. Dirk? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Dave? There's a coin you all.
Yeah. Thank you, sir.
And last but not least, Elijah. Thank you, buddy.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Congratulations. Oh, thank you.
Would you like to get a picture?
Want to take a picture? Yeah, that would be nice. We take a picture?
There we go.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Schick. And now we turn to our consent agenda, our agenda and consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and members of council. Item 7A is to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on November 15th, the special city council meeting November 12th, which was community agency funding, and the vision committee meeting on November 17th. 7B is to receive and file the 2021 official election results. 7C awards bid 4821 for carpet tile to Continental Flooring and amount not to exceed $9,907.04. 7D, going to have a slight amendment here. So this is award bid 06-22 for Axon Body Cameras to Axon Enterprise, Inc., and amount not to exceed $129,053.66. So changing it from 18 cents to 66 cents. 7E awards bid 0722 Axon Dash Cams to Axon Enterprise and amount not to exceed $49,535.97. 7F authorizes the mayor to sign a mutual aid agreement with the Fremont County Sheriff's Office. 7G authorizes the city administrator to sign a low-income household water assistance program vendor agreement. And 7H is to receive and file a list of bills.
Any comments or questions from council? Yes, Frank?
I guess it's going to be directed to probably the chief more than anybody else. With regards to the body cameras, is that going to include all just uniformed officers, those that wear the uniform and not? Because I know we have some detectives and that, they do not wear a uniform. Are they going to have a body camera also?
This new upgrade will provide body worn cameras for all of our sworn personnel to include CSOs.
Okay. That's the only question I have. And the only reason I ask this is because it said uniform. Technically, the detectives are in civilian clothing, so that's not...
Yeah. Okay. It'll cover all of us.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure, Tim.
Chief? Yeah, you almost did. I just have a question. With the, is this, did we look into any other companies besides Axon, or is this the leader in this?
No, we absolutely did look into other companies, and they could not provide the same level of service as Axon.
Okay. Okay. And then I, and I'm reading this, then on the, on the body cams, that's just a one-year basically warranty on those? Is that what I, did I get that right? And then there's a, no? Okay.
It's more than that.
And then there's an, and there an extended warranty on it, too?
So the agreement that you have in front of you actually is a five-year.
Okay.
So the warranty covers those cameras for all five years.
Five years?
And if you look into it, we actually get hardware refreshes and upgrades twice during that period.
Okay.
So.
Perfect.
And they will also be covered. Now, the final camera refresh that we would get at year five, if we choose not to exercise a renewal, does come with that one near-standard hardware warranty. But if we renew the licensing that comes along with it, then it renews the tap refresh for the five years.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you, Elijah. Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
Don't go away yet. There's maybe another question or two here that, does any other council member have a question? The, I do, I do have a question, and this is probably for our attorney first, but how long are we required to retain digital evidence?
Off the top of my head, I do not know. Sorry.
Is it maybe case dependent or?
It is case dependent, absolutely. We have a retention schedule here in Colorado that defines that.
So it is defined what?
Yes, sir.
How long digital, is it, is it longer than five years in most cases?
It depends on the case. Certain cases, we will hold indefinitely.
Two?
I think, I think the average is three.
Oh, for yours? Okay.
Yeah, the average is three.
So, so my question is, for digital evidence that's older than five years, there's a chance that in five years, you know, we may not use Axon again. Do we have some kind of plan to download digital evidence that may be require, that may require retention longer than five years?
So we do not have a plan in place, per se, but that is something that we can cross that bridge when we get to it. Definitely feasible for us to do so if that requirement is there. We do have full ability and functionality to retain our own data from that system after we place it in there, if we choose to do so.
Okay, we have full, we have the ability to retain and access that data. About, about how much storage does a year's worth of digital data take up?
So for the amount of digital that we have currently, we run into somewhere in the range of seven to nine terabytes total. We are only upfitting two-thirds of the department at the moment, so we anticipate exceeding 10 terabytes per year.
Yeah. Okay. I have a further question. The, the police department has a program where civilians or citizens that have cameras on their houses can interface those, allow the police department access to those digital cameras. And I believe that that's on a case-by-case basis. It's not a constant download or something like that, but on a case-by-case basis. Do we have any provision for, you know, Axon to store some of those digital files for us?
Somewhat. So there are functionality and features out of this system where an officer can request video footage from a private surveillance system or business surveillance system and then import that footage into this Axon system and retain it.
Via link, isn't it?
Yeah. So it's via link that they would share with the person on site when they respond. And it's a duplicate copy. You know, they keep their originals and everything else, and we would absorb the second copy for our own retention.
Okay. And just a suggestion for in the future that would make review perhaps for council members a little bit easier, we'd have a master services or a couple of master services agreements in our packets. And we're not purchasing all the, all the services covered by those master agreements. And I would just recommend that in the future that we, any part of the master agreements that we're not purchasing, that have separate sections, that those just be removed to make it a little bit easier to review what's going on. And we're, we're going to have to have the dash cams installed in our vehicles. Do we have someone lined up to do that, chief?
That would be Axon themselves.
Oh, Axon is doing the installation? I thought I saw that they excluded that. But they, they intended, we intend them to do the installation. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments from council? Then I would entertain a motion.
Just a reminder to, as amended, thank you.
Thank you. Brandon?
Mayor Protem and council, I move to approve the consent agenda with the revision to letter D, changing 18 cents to 66 cents.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to revise our consent agenda and approve our agenda. Is that correct also?
Yes.
Thank you. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hammack?
Aye.
And now we move on to the city administrators' report.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. You have the written reports in your packets, a couple of other items here. We had the tree lighting last Friday. Parks Department did a great job, you know, getting that prepared. Of course, we had showings from the, the police department participating in the snowball fights and then the parade on Saturday. Again, collaborative effort with our Streets Department and Police Department. In light of some recent events going on around the nation, we took extra precautions to secure the parade routes and make sure that it was a safe event for all. And just want to thank our Streets Department and the PD for the extra diligence that they put in for both of those events. I'd be happy to take any other questions regarding the administrator report, the written report.
Mandy?
So I just wanted to thank everybody for all of the work that they did at the parade. And it was actually recognized by several citizens, the extra precautions that were in place with heavy equipment and things like that. And so I just wanted to mention that a lot of those things weren't discussed openly, but it was recognized and really just appreciated. It just was a great community event. I feel like everyone was really excited to be there, and it was just, it blessed my heart to know that, you know, chief and our PD and our Streets Department did everything that they could to make it to where we could all enjoy that time with our families and not have to think about other events that were going on. So thank you so much for that.
Sure.
Yes.
I would just like to also just say a thank you. The, the parade was fantastic, but the lighting of the lights was fantastic, and I'd like to really put a thank you out to our police department because they went into the snowball deal and had a ball with the kids, and the kids absolutely loved that. And then an absolute, just great shout out to our Parks Department. They did an absolutely fantastic job getting the lights on, but, you know, and the, and the whole snowball fight thing is a blast with the kids, but to watch them out there with the police department, wow, they all just loved it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Then we will move on to community agency funding. As council knows, we did have, we did meet with the community agencies. The community agency advisory committee met and heard from the different agencies that we have here in town. And just as a reminder, the, the community agency funding is a fund created by sequestering fines and forfeitures, if I understand it correctly, into a special account that is then used to fund what we can spend on community agencies. Is that, do I have that correct, Mr. Administrator?
I believe that's how it originated, but, you know, as we've moved forward, you know, we, we set aside that, those funds on a consistent basis to make sure that we're giving back to those community agencies.
From the general fund?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But it's, but, but there is, the original intent was that it would be kind of a self-paying for program. It was, I want to say, you know, personally, it is really great to be able to sit up here and hear from the different agencies and nonprofit groups that we have here in town that care a lot about our town and invest a lot, excuse me, in different programs and, and helping improve the quality of life for our citizens. The, we heard from the Boys and Girls Club of Fremont County, the Bridge U Center, the Canyon Literacy Center, the Fremont Community Concert Association, Heart of Colorado, which is a community court-appointed special advocates group, which is a court-appointed advocate for children, for minors that, that have been caught up in the court system somehow, often not for anything that they have done, and provide advocates to help watch out for their interests in any legal proceedings. We had JJ's Helping Paws, the Pantry of Fremont County, and... There's one more. Make sure I say it right. The Senior Services Solutions. Excuse me? And Uncaged Today. Yes, correct. Thank you. Thank you for that addition. And it was great, it was great to listen to the people and what they, what they do with this, you know, in most cases, you know, under $5,000 is the award, and the good that they can do with that money. And in, in general, those are the, what they do, what these agencies do are things that general, in general governments cannot do well or efficiently, and so it is really great to see citizens step forward to do that. We had 45,800 requested, and we recommended the award of 40,900. The details are in your, in your booklets. And with that... Those are the, those are the recommended amounts for council approval, and I believe we need to vote on that, don't we?
Yes, and the, and the past council has approved, voted to approve this, and then this document becomes part of the budget book.
Any discussion from council? Do I have a motion?
Sure.
Yes, Tim?
Mayor Protem and council, I make a motion to approve the recommended community agency funding for fiscal year 2022.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hammack?
Aye.
And now we move on to a second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance 29, series of 2021 entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City, Rezoning Certain Property Within the City of Canyon City, Colorado, Known as the Canyon City Commons at the Abbey." And this is a... If I remember correctly, did we not continue the public hearing? Is that correct?
We closed the public hearing.
We closed the public hearing.
Yep. So this is the second reading of the ordinance.
This is the second reading, and have we received a further comment?
We'll turn that over to Patrick Moretti, the city planner.
We have received no additional comments since the public hearing conducted November 15th.
Okay. We do have a citizen request to speak on this. Doug, did you want to speak on the Abbott?
Mayor Protem Hammack, I'm sorry.
Sorry to interrupt.
Because it's not a public hearing, and this is a quasi-judicial decision, you would have to reopen the public hearing to take public comment.
I see.
Yeah, and this was not noticed as a public hearing, as a continuation of that.
All right.
So the rules are a little bit stricter because it's quasi-judicial.
So if we, if the citizen wanted to speak on this issue, they would have had to spoke at the beginning of the council meeting?
No, at the last meeting when the public hearing was held.
So the, the opportunity to speak on this subject has come and passed.
Yes.
Sorry about that, Doug.
So, in other words, if I have comments, if I couldn't speak under the citizen's portion of that?
That's correct on this issue. That is correct. Sorry about that. Any discussion by council? Frank?
I wasn't here for the first reading, but my only question is going to be, and I would have asked all these questions if I'd have been here and that. I looked at the map and everything. The plan's a great plan. I have no problem with the plan and everything. But my question would be, is, did we have any kind of discussion with the county commissioners and that? Because if you look at the plan, this design here, a lot of that traffic, according to what's in here, will be going out onto Central, and that's in the county. It's going to affect there. Most of the traffic that's going to be coming from this is going to be flowed into the county the way the map has it designed. And I can remember back several years ago, when this project first came up, a long time ago, at that time, they wanted to put a road coming across the abbey to intersect right behind the apartment complex that's up there onto Dozier. The only reason I'm bringing this up is because with this council that's going to continue with regards to hearings and everything with regards to this as it proceeds along the roadway, need to look at the impact, road impact that it's going to have in those areas with regards to traffic and traffic flow, all right? And it's very important, all right? The reason why it's important, because you also have, according to the map, areas where they want to access onto Highway 50, other than the original one, as you go into the Abbey grounds. And it looks like, according to the map, they want to intersect into Highway 50 with area where you go back to the winery and everything else. So whether it's too late or not now to do anything about it, I don't foresee anything happening with this project. It's a good project, but I don't see anything happening with this project for at least a good 10, 15 years. I hope it happens sooner, but I don't see it happening because, like I say, I was on council way back when, when this thing first came about. And that... I say, I was on council way back when, when this thing first came about, and that's been a good 10, 15 years back. So now we're looking at another 10, 15 years forward. I wish all the success for this program. But just look at it this way. Those members that are going to continue with city council into the future, and the new ones that are coming in, working with this into the future, take all these considerations in, because I don't foresee it happening in any one of these council's lifetime. It's going to be a council down the roadway. But you, as current council members, can do stuff to maybe help, impact, or make it a lot easier as we proceed down the roadway. I wish all the success for this project, but there's a lot of stuff that council members really need to start looking at it, all right? Like I said, this thing was here 10, 15 years ago. I think it's going to take another, I hope it doesn't, take another 10, 15 years down the roadway. This would be my only comments. I'd have made the same comments if I'd have been here during the beginning. Thank you for allowing me to make this comment.
Thank you. The, and I would just note, as a matter of information, that, that at this particular ordinance, or ordinance that we have in front of us, is for the rezoning, and that, and that what will happen is that, as a result of this rezoning, there's likely to come in several different plans for different areas on the property, and that is the time that we look at those issues of traffic.
And that's why I'm making my comments now. So when those things come up, we look at that stuff. Don't, don't wait until it happens. Start thinking about it before it happens.
Any other comments from council? Yes, Ryan?
Mayor Protem, we do have a staff report based off of some of the feedback that we received from the last city council meeting, and turn that over to Patrick to go through that when you're ready.
Please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem and members of the city council. This evening, council is being asked to approve the ordinance amending the Abbey property on second reading. As part of the process, staff was asked to compare the internal residential land use areas to the established land use zones identified in the city's UDC, and to report on specific modifications that were requested of the development guide. In addition, based on feedback that we got as recently as today, we've got some additional recommendations for you on this. So, without further ado, beginning at the low end of the density spectrum is the estate residential uses. Lots within the ER, estate residential land use area, are the largest lots found within the Canyon City Commons at the Abbey PDD. There are two internal land use areas designated as ER areas. The ER planning area requires minimum lot sizes of 20,000 square feet with a minimum 50-foot lot width, as well as front and rear setbacks of 25 feet and side setbacks of 10 feet. These setback limitations on a minimum 20,000 square foot lot yield a developable area, which would be figuratively shown in the orange box up there, as 9,000 square feet. In this respect, it is a lower density than the RL Rural Living Residential District in the city's Unified Development Code. The RL district, however, is the closest Euclidean zone district defined in the city's UDC to this ER zone district. The first step higher on this density ladder is the VH Village Homes and MM Missing Middle residential land use areas. There are three of each land use area designated on the development plan. These are more moderate density areas. The primary difference between the two is that duplex units are allowed in Missing Middle, but not in Village Homes. The minimum lot size for both VH and Missing Middle is 4,500 square feet. Both districts require a 20-foot front yard setback, 10-foot rear yard setback, and 5-foot side yard setbacks, and a 40-foot frontage along the street. This translates to a developable area under minimum lot configurations of 2,475 square feet. Now, it was erroneously stated in the information that was provided in your packet that the closest Euclidean zone district described with the city is the R1 zone. In fact, the minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet of R2, median density residential, is the closest code-defined zone district to this one. The next step higher on the density ladder is the CH Cottage Homes residential land use area. There are two of these land use areas designated on the development plan. The land use area is on the threshold of becoming high density, but are still oriented towards single-family lots. The minimum lot size for both, for the CH land use area is 3,500 square feet. Lot width reduces to 30 feet, and setbacks are 15 feet for the front setback, 10 feet for the rear, and 5 feet for the side yards. On a minimum square footage lot, this translates to a developable area of 1,833.4 square feet. In terms of the square footage of this lot, this is exactly the same as the city's R1A zone district, low-density, small-lot residential. Indeed, the setbacks are also exactly the same as R1A. The second highest density range is the TH Townhomes residential land use area. There is one of this designated on the plan. The concept behind this residential land use area is to allow for a maximum amount of buildable area on the lot in order to create a rowhouse-townhome look. In pursuit of that goal, yards are therefore minimized or removed altogether. The minimum lot size for a townhome lot is 1,500 square feet with a buildable area of 1,500 square feet due to zero setbacks on all lot lines. The minimum lot width is reduced to 20 feet. The city has no corresponding land use zone to TH within our, within our Unified Development Code. The Abbey property will be the first time a residential land use like this has been proposed and utilized in Canyon City. The highest density range under the proposed Abbey PDD are the SH Senior Housing and AP Apartment Residential Land Use Areas. There are two senior housing land use areas and one apartment land use area designated on the Abbey PDD development plan. These areas are intended to be true multifamily residential. The minimum lot size for both the SH and AP land use areas is 60,000 square feet. Minimum lot width is increased to 100 feet, and setbacks are also increased to 25 feet in the front and rear, and 10 feet on the sides. This translates to a buildable area of 44,000 square feet. The city has a high-density residential zone, the R3 Zone District. R3, however, starts with a much smaller minimum-sized lot, in this case, 6,000 square feet, and increases that lot size as you add dwelling units. The SH and AP land use areas begin with the understanding that these areas will handle building bulk. That is why they are sized to be this large as a minimum lot size. They are constrained, however, by a 55% lot coverage of building mass, and a requirement that parking will have to be provided for each dwelling unit, as well as guest parking on site. So while they can, can certainly go to an upper density range, that's constrained by the fact that they've got a building mass limitation, and they have a parking requirement that they're going to have to meet. So the geometry of the land and how they program it is going to have to take all of that into account. There were no changes proposed to the 12 planning areas that were designated for non-residential uses on this site, so there was no additional analysis provided for this evening on those areas. Now, in terms of modifications to the development guide, page two has been modified to include a specific addition to the development, to the design guidelines for future development. Construction design guidelines for new buildings will emphasize conformance with the architectural style of the historic structures to create a consistent look and feel to the completed project. The goal behind this was to make sure that future architecture out there did not compete or detract from the quality of the architecture of the historic monastery building in particular. That's why that language was incorporated here. The development guide was also modified per the discussions of the first reading of the ordinance. In the list of residential area uses on page seven, backyard chickens have been added. This was an item that was requested at the last meeting, that has been added. In three quarter, three categories of group homes on this list have been consolidated into one for the purposes of not being redundant about it. Groups home, group homes are group homes. Now, after judging these land uses, bed and breakfasts have been designated as special review uses in order to make them consistent with how they are treated generally in the UDC. And mobile homes have been removed as any kind of a use on this plan. Now, staff would also like to further recommend a category of accessory uses be created on this list, into which we place backyard chickens, accessory structures, and accessory buildings. Councilmember Schmisher pointed out that backyard chickens can't be considered a principal use, and as it's listed under residential uses, that makes it a principal use. So we would like to see that modification put into place as well. We would also like to recommend that, as determined in the EH, yes, this would go into the same zone districts, the EH, the VH, and the, I believe the CH would allow for that. And it would have the same designation for limitations as the code defines in 1705-140H. Under the subject of, the development guide has also been modified for non-residential land use areas. The list of non-residential land use areas on page nine, the category of residential uses to omit redundancy, has now been narrowed to only one: multi-unit dwellings, and they are only allowed as permitted uses in the HC Historic Commercial and LW Live Work Areas. Gas and oil wells, given their industrial nature, were seen as incompatible with the Abbey PDD, and were therefore removed from this list of non-residential uses. Finally, recreational vehicle parks, where allowed, are now considered special review uses in the land use areas where they are established, in order to treat them consistently with RV parks generally throughout the city. Now, from this, we have one additional change which concerns the temporary use category. Staff and the applicant agree that these should be processed as part of the city's temporary use provisions, rather than as the special review uses that the code currently has them listed. As I pointed out to the applicant, when the winery hosts its annual Autumn Harvest Festival, I don't think they would like to come and get an ordinance every year in order to hold that event. I think we would be better off treating it as a temporary use provision. And then with that, Planning Commission, as I mentioned at the last hearing, conducted a public hearing on this request on October 27th. This hearing included extensive testimony from the public, following the staff recommendation in the applicant's presentation. Council conducted a public hearing on this item on November 15th, 2021, and approved ordinance 29, series of 2021, on first reading with specific conditions. At the conclusion of the public hearing this evening, staff recommends that council approve ordinance 29, series of 2021, on second reading, conditioned on the modifications to the development guide that I specified on slides nine and 10 of this PowerPoint presentation this evening. That would conclude my presentation. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Do we have any questions from council or comments? Hey, I see a raised hand by Amy Schmisher. Would you like to comment, please?
Thanks so much, Mayor Protem. Just briefly, I would like to make sure that this approval would be contingent upon the preservation of the existing monastery building. So I just wanted to flag that, that it isn't, it's obviously the applicant's intent to preserve it, but it is, it is not specifically stated that it must be preserved, or that it definitely will be preserved. So I would like to make that contingent upon my approval, and would respectfully, respectfully request that if a motion is made, that that be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments on that? Is that, so that's, that's within our purview? Is that correct?
Yes, you could ask for that. And I don't know the details of the plan, but the plan could state that the monastery would not be demolished, and any amendment to that plan would have to come back before you. So you could do it that way.
And then, any comments on that? And I believe we're ready for a motion. If we, the, so, actually, the way, the way I took your comment, Councilwoman Schmisher, is that, is that you are making a motion that we include that as a requirement in the plan? Is that correct?
Yes. Does that be a motion to be part of, of any plan that we consider? Thank you.
Okay, so we have a, a motion from Councilwoman Schmisher. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. And so before we vote on the plan, let's vote on this motion. May I have the roll call, please? Yes.
No, it'd be the, it's the motion to approve the ordinance. Would that change to the plan?
With that requirement, thank you.
Yeah, I apologize, yeah.
Yes, so, okay, now, now we've got the parliamentary part straight.
Okay.
All right, so we, so we have, I want to say a recommendation.
You have a motion to approve ordinance 29 on second reading with the condition that the plan be changed to represent that the monastery will be preserved and not destroyed.
Thank you for that restatement. And so, the, so that is what, so that, so I will call for, yes?
Yeah, so I, I just want to make sure, just for the record, that, that is, that's the motion from Councilwoman Schmisher. And Mr. Dennehy, you, you had the second, and you're, you're going to second that motion as stated?
As stated by our attorney.
Yes, I am.
Thank you. I just want to make sure we have a clean process here.
Thank you, thank you for that.
Do we have to include the revisions in the motion?
As, as revised.
Just as revised.
Because it was already advised, revised.
Let's clarify.
Already revised with, with the contingency. So we have the staff recommendation that we approve the motion, the ordinance on second reading, with the provision that the monastery, the preservation of the monastery be included, and that any removal of that monastery would have to come before this council, or be, before council. So we have a motion and a second. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So we're ready for a roll call, then?
Do we have discussion?
Yes, sure.
Is there any way we could hear from Mr. Brown on that before we vote?
You haven't opened a public hearing. If you want to do that, you can, but you're in the middle of a motion, so you need to vote on that first, and then if you want to go back to a public hearing, you can.
So we're the, of course, and, and with a public hearing would need to be noticed. But, so we do have a motion and a second? Is that correct?
Yes, we do.
All right, and so, any other discussion? Could we have a roll?
Sorry, Mayor, Mayor Protem?
Absolutely.
Just as a matter of question to perhaps get, Councilmember Smith's question would perhaps, could that question perhaps be addressed to city staff? That may be a question for, for our lawyer. I'm, I'm not sure, but just wanted, I, I wasn't trying to unintentionally cut the conversation short on this very important topic. So just wanted to, to raise that as a possibility.
Yeah, it depends on what the question is, I suppose. I don't know what your question is, but maybe it can be directed to city staff. However, you are in the middle of potentially a vote on a motion, so you can open up that discussion to city staff if you want, if your question could be asked.
We're good? All right, so we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Harkes?
Aye.
I'm sorry?
I said aye.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hammack?
Aye.
So our motion has, our, the ordinance has passed, and now we move on to second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance 30, series 2021, entitled An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City, Colorado, appropriating sums of money to various funds and spending agencies, and the amounts and for the purpose set forth below for the city of Canyon City, Colorado, for the 2022 budget year. This is a second reading. This is a second reading, and have we received any comments?
We have not received any additional comments, and Director of Finance Tammy Nordike is online for any additional questions.
Are there additional questions from council? If not, I would call for a motion. Yes, go ahead, please.
Mayor Protem and council, I look that we approve on second reading ordinance number 30, series of 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion of that? May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hamrick.
Aye.
And now, we move on to item D, second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance 31, series of 2021, entitled "An Ordinance Increasing the Base Rate Used to Calculate Stormwater Management Fees Chargeable by the City's Stormwater Utility Enterprise." And this was not a public hearing, is that correct?
It's correct. This is a second here, second reading again.
Second reading, and so.
No additional comments from the public.
But if we had someone in the audience that wished to comment, they could.
Because it's not quasi-judicial, it's fine if you take public comment.
And so, Mr. Cohen, do you have a comment on stormwater utility rates?
Thank you much for recognizing me. And I want to thank you this evening for the wonderful decorations that are in Depot Park and all along Main Street and other parts of town. It's wonderful. I'm Doug Cohen. I live at 1102 Vine. I'm not representing myself or any member of the family. I'm representing Canyon City and Oil Creek Ditch Company. And I wanted to talk about stormwater runoff. Is it okay if I mention the abbey? Okay, thank you. We spent many hours with staff on the Rhodes Avenue project, and that project was designed. I think the city still has a ordinance or whatever for a hundred-year flood. Things are be designed for a hundred-year flood. That particular project wasn't because of funding, and that was previous to any talk about the abbey. So, now we have a development at the abbey or going to with a lot of houses and a lot of streets and a lot of parking area, which equates to quite a bit of runoff. Our ditch is located, the only ditch south or north of the river. And it's not our intent nor our purpose to try to sidetrack this thing in any manner. I just want to make sure publicly that council knows that Oil Creek Ditch will not accept any stormwater from the abbey project. Maybe the, I haven't seen any update in any plans for stormwater because of the abbey. Maybe it's been changed. I don't know. But our board just wants you folks to know that it's not our intent to take any stormwater off that project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doug. And I would say that in response to that, it's basically the same comment as before. What we approved tonight was a zoning change, but not any specific plans. And so, the stormwater bridge, if you want to call it that, will be crossed in the future, and that will certainly be part of the review and discussion that goes on with any particular sub-project of the total abbey project.
Okay. Go ahead, Ryan. I want to ask you. So, go ahead, no, go ahead.
But just, you know, another, you know, point to make is that the city's goal is to encourage zero-impact development. So, any stormwater that's generated by building on the abbey should be maintained on that site and addressed accordingly. And that, as Mayor Protem Hamrick stated, that will be done through subdivision process where full engineering and drainage plans need to be submitted.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. I also, I noticed bids were open for, apparently, the Rhodes Avenue project. So, when do you anticipate that construction to begin or whatever?
Yeah, the bids are out there, and that project is moving forward. We're hoping to, you know, award the bid in January. But we're still looking at construction timelines because we know, you know, the impacts to the ditch, that was part of the bid package to make sure that there is no impact to the operation of the ditch.
Okay, because I was contacted by one of the bidders wanting to know when we're going to turn ditch off because tree removal and such. And so, that's why I was wondering when this is all, if you'll keep me appraised, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so we have before us ordinance 31. Any comments or questions by council? This is a second reading. If none, I would call for a motion.
Mayor Protem and council, I move to approve ordinance 31 on second reading, series of 2021.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hamrick.
Aye.
Now, we move on to item E, which is second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance 32, series of 2021, entitled "An Ordinance Amending Certain Water Rate Schedules Set Forth in the City's Water Code Relative to Water Services, Water Service Provided by the Canyon City Water Department and Water Activity Enterprise." Did we have any other comments on this?
Again, this is second reading, and we've received no additional public comment on the topic.
Thank you. The, since we have received no further comments, I would call for a motion.
Mayor Protem and council, I move to approve ordinance 32, series of 2021, on second reading.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hamrick.
Aye.
And now, we move on to item F, second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance 33, series of 2021, entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City, Amending Chapter 9.22 of the City of Canyon City Municipal Code by the Addition of a New Section 9.22.040 Prohibiting Sitting or Lying Down in Public Rights of Way." And, Mr. Administrator?
Yes, this is a second reading, and we do have a request. Ms. DeeDee Clements would like to say a few words regarding this topic. She wasn't available for the first reading. And if DeeDee could come to the microphone, please.
Thank you for having me here tonight. So, I, first of all, I just want to start off by saying that I support this ordinance. I believe it's a good idea. And I know one of the things that has been spoken a lot about is the various prongs that are being used to end homelessness in our community. And so, I guess I just wanted to just talk about that, because there has been a lot of work that's been done with ending homelessness here. There's still a lot of work that needs to be done, but there's a lot of work that's already been done. So, today, as of right now, we are aware of 176 people who are experiencing homelessness tonight. 151 adults, and 25 of them are children. I really believe that that represents about 80%. I think we've done a great job of capturing the number of people who are experiencing homelessness in our community. Something that I'm not sure if you're aware of, but in 2021, we have actually housed 236 individuals who were previously homeless, just this year alone. 166 adults, and 70 of them were children. Since we've been part of this Built for Zero community effort, in 2020, we have actually housed 535 individuals that were literally homeless. So, I just can't emphasize this enough that because of all the work that has been done to end homelessness in our community, we are seeing, we are seeing results. And if we have not, if we hadn't been doing this work, our numbers would be drastic. I know that we get upset when we see people panhandling, and we get upset when we see people in our parks and all this other kind of stuff. But if we had not have been doing the work, we would have over 500 people that potentially could still be out on the streets tonight. So, some of the things, some of the efforts that have been happening, one is street outreach. The co-responders that we have are tremendous. They go out every single day. They're interacting with people who are experiencing homelessness. We have Department of Human Services and Loaves and Fishes. Each of them has a hired case manager, that their whole job is to go out on the street every day and talk to people. And then, we have a huge faith community that goes out and reaches people. We need more. In order for us to end homelessness in our community, that's where it starts, is on the street, by building relationships and encouraging them to engage in services. And so, as we move forward, I believe that is something that we really need to work on. The other thing is our emergency shelter. Many of you guys know that Loaves and Fishes is expanding our shelter. We currently had a 17-bed shelter, and then with our expansion, we had to reduce it down to 10. But in January, it should be completed, and it'll go up to 38. And so, that's going to make a huge difference, getting people off the street into our emergency shelter, so then we can help them move on with the next step. Another thing that's happening that you may or may not be aware of is every week, we have case management, housing case management made up of various veteran agencies, Department of Human Services, La Vista Health, all of the service providers talk every week about our veterans who are experiencing homelessness. Tonight, we only have one veteran who is sleeping on the streets. That's great news, because we couldn't say that a year ago. We also have, twice a month, we do the same thing with people who are chronic. Chronic is for folks who are a year or longer and have a disability. And our goal is to end chronic homelessness by next summer, July of about 2022. Tonight, there are 32 people who are chronic that are living on our streets. And the sad thing is, is that 16 of them actually have a housing resource, meaning that they have a voucher, or they've been identified for a rapid rehousing program. But the challenge is, is that we can't find any place to move them into. And so, while I'm excited to hear the passing of the abbey, and I know that there are other projects out there, housing is something that we need for everyone, for those who have extremely low income, to those who maybe make several hundred thousand dollars a year. But all of us need housing. And so, excited to see that the community, the council is looking in that effort or going in that effort. But here's what we need, guys. We're not done yet. In order for us to end it, we need your help. So, in order for, as I mentioned, our goal is to end homelessness by, or end chronic homelessness by next summer. Some of the things that we're working on right now is landlord incentives. We're trying to figure out, is there a better way that we can incentivize landlords to maybe take some higher-risk individuals by maybe doubling their deposits, maybe guaranteeing regular home visits in the house to make sure that their property's being maintained. So, there's a group of people that's trying to brainstorm that. The other thing that we're looking at is, I mentioned to you the importance of outreach, street outreach. People with lived experience, we've seen it, we've seen that it's a best practice when it comes to addictions, people who have lived experience, when they talk to someone else who's struggling with an addiction, there is more apt to listen to that person. And so, the idea is, is could we use people who were previously homeless? Could we somehow engage them in our street outreach efforts, and so they could actually come alongside of someone and help them get into housing, or at least seek some services? And then, the other thing is the navigation center. And so, I've shared with you guys before that Loaves and Fishes is in the process of several building phases. Our first is our emergency shelter. Our second is our warehouse that we want to do in 2022. And then, the last is our navigation center. And navigation center would be also in our warehouse. And that would be the place where people who are experiencing homelessness could come during the day, and they could take showers, they would have access to laundry. More importantly, they would also have access to resources. We need your help. There will come a point where you'll see me come before the council again, probably requesting some type of financial assistance or other assistance as we move forward with that. So, anyway, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak tonight, and I'm here to answer any questions if you have of me.
Do we have any questions or comments from council?
I just have a comment. I just want to thank you guys for all of your hard work. When I first came on council, I was unaware at how deep homelessness was a problem, especially in our community. And between Built for Zero and our PD and everything that's gone into this, I just applaud your effort. Thank you.
Thank you, DeeDee.
Mayor Protem, I also had a comment, if that's okay?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you so much. And thanks so much to DeeDee for coming tonight and speaking about some of the other facets of the multi-pronged approach. I think it's really important for our community to have these types of services for individuals who are experiencing homelessness, because obviously, just experiencing homelessness is not in and of itself a crime. So, while public safety is really important and paramount, it's also really important that our community has the appropriate services to help these people. So, I'd just really like to echo Councilmember Smith's comments and appreciate Loaves and Fishes and the Built for Zero Coalition and all of those who are working on this issue. So, thank you for being here.
And thank you for those comments. And so, the, we have the ordinance in front of us, second reading and adoption, and there were no other public comments? Is that correct?
That is correct.
And so, I'm looking for a motion.
Mayor Protem and council, I move to approve ordinance 33 on second reading, series of 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? Call for a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hamrick.
Aye.
And we move now to item G on our agenda, which is introduction and adoption by title only of Resolution 29, series of 2021, entitled "A Resolution Levying General Property Taxes for the Year 2021 to Help Defray the Costs of Government for the City of Canyon City, Colorado for the 2022 Budget Year." And Ryan, you have a report for us?
We will have a report from Tammy Nordike, our finance director.
Before you tonight is Resolution 29, series of 2021. This is levying our property taxes for the next year. This is done in accordance with, as part of our budget. And then, we do also have to make sure that we have this certified to the county by December 15th. This resolution will set the total mill levy for the city at 2.892 mils with anticipated revenue of $531,330. Are there any questions from council?
Questions or comments? Then I would ask for a motion.
Mayor Protem and council, I move to approve Resolution 29, series of 2021.
A second.
And we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll call for a vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hamrick.
Aye.
And now, we move to item H. And now we move to item H on our agenda, which is, the City of Canyon City established an energy franchise committee. When the franchise with Black Hills was not approved, but was disapproved by voters a couple of years ago, council formed this committee to look at the issue of energy franchise, and to request that this committee look at those issues, and to issue a report. The committee has been active for quite a while now. We have several committee members present, and I'd like to recognize them. We have Carol Dunn here, Doug Cohen, Kirk Soother, and Emily Tracy, as well as one of the, one additional person that has attended many of our meetings, which is John V. Hill from Black Energies. And so, the interim report, the executive summary and the interim report were both included in your packet, and the committee, I believe, would like to make a presentation on the interim report. This is considered an interim report by the committee. It is not a final report, but it is just kind of informational to let council know what has been going on in the committee, some of the facts that we have discovered. And so with that, the, have a PowerPoint presentation, and Kirk, I understand you're going to present that to us. If you'd come up and have a seat up here, that'd be really great. Make sure the green light is on, so people at home can hear you too. Thank you, Kirk.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council. It was about seven or eight months ago when we were all, we were here talking about being on this committee, and time has flown by, and we've had really a lot of good individuals helping us out, had a lot of good meetings with a lot of excellent speakers, and I'm not, let's see here.
Which button here, the top one?
Come in.
I think Mayor Protem pretty well went over this in the introduction, so I'm not going to repeat that, as far as the franchise agreement. And also, he talked a little bit about the committee, so he's made it easy for me tonight. And three of the things that we've been looking at, this is a review, and we've been looking at some of the options, and the three options that we're looking at are investor-owned utilities, rural electric cooperatives, and municipal utilities. And the real, this is not an easy subject to comprehend with the utilities, and we're just still learning a lot. But three of the major things are the generation, transmission, and distribution of the electricity. So those are three very vital components of the getting electricity. As far as the generation, on the very left-hand side, shows the composition for the United States. 60% of it is fossil fuels, 20% nuclears, and 20% renewables. And then on the right-hand side, as of 2020, that our electric composition of generation was 70% natural gas and 30% from renewables. And it's scheduled to get up to 51% renewables. Like I said, the three main components, generation, transmission, and distribution. So you have the distribution and, or the transmission of getting the power from the generators, and then to the distribution networks that'll take it into houses and businesses. In Colorado, we have two investor-owned utilities. We have 22 electric cooperatives and 29 municipal utilities. And there's, I think you might be able to see the map a little bit better in your packet. And what we're looking at right now is we're reviewing through the different alternatives for utilities, and the first one was the investor-owned utilities. Some of the characteristics are, they have a parent holding company, a corporation, and then underneath that corporation, they'll have other utility operating companies that do business, a lot of it between each other. And it is owned by publicly traded stockholders. The corporation's board of directors are elected by the stockholders, and there's oversight and regulation from state public utility commissions, and the rates are approved by the public utility commissions, and the rates do include some profits in them. The second form of utility is the rural electric cooperative, and that's a not-for-profit organization that is owned by the local customers and members. The board of directors are elected by the local customers and members, and they're not regulated by the state utility commission, and the rates are determined by their board of directors, and the rates are set for break even to pay their expenses. The third is a municipal utility, and some of the characteristics, they're governed by the enterprise fund rules that the state has. They're owned by each municipality. The board of directors is elected by city customers. In addition, they're not regulated by the public utility commission. Rates are determined by the board of directors, and rates are set to break even, and if there's any surpluses, it may go to the general fund. The Colorado Public Utility Commission, they have oversight and regulation of the investor-owned utilities, and they grant them a service area for the oversight and regulation. And the investor-owned utilities are supposed to provide a safe and reliable electrical service at a just and reasonable cost. And the public utility commission is the entity that determines that. The Black Hills Electric purchased our system here in 2008. At that time, we had the coal plant, and they also, Black Hills also had a contract with a wholesaler to buy electricity from. And then as time proceeded with the 2010 legislation, closed, we closed and demolished the coal plant here in town. And then Black Hills had submitted a request to the public utility commission, and the public utility commission allowed them to build three natural gas generators at Pueblo. Now, when we were talking about the components, the generation, transmission, and distribution, Black Hills has all three of those, that they own quite a bit of that. So they're a vertically integrated utility company. We spent quite a bit of time looking at the public utility, they did a rate study, according to the state, had them do that in 2021. The study just came out here, I believe it was in February, and they were tasked to find out what the average rates were. And if you take a look at the, the first column is the residential, which is, the state average is the second column, which is 12.18 cents per kilowatt hour, and Black Hills was 16.38. So the rates were considerably higher than what the average in the state is. In the report, the PUC, the Public Utility Commission, did identify some driving factors that increase the rates. The Public Utility Commission uses a revenue formula, which, with an increase of long-term assets, it increases your rates. You know, the more you spend on the big assets, and the PUC did approve the three natural gas generators, and the PUC in their report indicated that these long-term assets were a major driver for rate increases.
And if I could, Kirk, on that particular slide, I'd like to point out to council that the PUC approval of the three natural gas generators, which were pretty hefty capital expenditures by Black Hills, was encouraged and allowed by legislation passed by the Colorado Legislature called the Clean Air and Clean Jobs Act, and that essentially, if Black Hills met certain conditions, the legislation allowed them to receive this approval.
Yeah, I believe that one of the generators was directly as an impact of that. The other two were done prior to that law.
Prior to that, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but this sort of shows you the public utilities, the revenue formula. They allow the utility company to have operating expenses, just like any company would have. But then, in addition to that, the second portion of it is, if you take the rate base or the investments in all of the, like the generation capacity, the distribution and the transmission, add all that up, then they're able to multiply that times a rate of return that the Public Utility Commission says we can allow you up to 9.37 for your equity debt, and 7.3 for your bond repayments. And any difference between that, of what the actual cost is, is multiplied by the rate base. So, and there's a little bit more explanation in the packet there. The electric cooperative, let's see here. We did give a recommendation back in October, and I believe that with Core Electric Cooperative is in the process of doing due diligence for the creation of a potential electric franchise agreement. So that is, that is one of the, you know, options that is out there. And then, secondly, is with the municipal utility, which was just approved with Guzman. They're looking at doing a feasibility study, and with the possibility of creating a municipal utility. And I believe when I was talking about seven or eight months ago, I said that we probably would have to do a study to have some of this stuff done. I didn't really dream that the studies would be done like this. So I think it's very fortunate that we have been able to get that done. So they will start with a feasibility study too. So after that is done, then all of the proposals will be looked at. And Black Hills, we have not discussed a proposal yet to date. They are scheduled to be at our next meeting on January 10th. So anything, they're given an opportunity to discuss the proposals with us, and that will be part of the review process that we go through with the three. Another electric option that the state of Kansas, or, not Kansas, see, I'm going back to Kansas now.
That's it.
The Yellow Brick Road. Is, a study's being commissioned by the state legislature, and the report is due by the end of next year. And the community choice, bottom line, the utility provider would still be the provider of transmission, distribution, billing, and customer service, but then there might be potential changes for local control over wholesale purchases of the energy, which we've studied a little bit, and it's a very complex, very complex topic. But that's just something to be aware of, that would be included, that we'll be looking at. Then I basically went over that. That's just a little chart there showing some of the characteristics.
Thank you, Kirk. Any questions or comments from council? And we do have a request to speak from Emily Tracy, one of our committee members.
I just thought I would add just a brief comment to Kirk's excellent presentation. It really, and we've known for quite some time that this is a complex topic. The committee has been working diligently, meeting twice a month, I think most, if not all, months, learning a lot about what's out there, and what's in the landscape in Colorado. How do various communities and parts of the state get electricity? I did want to just add a little bit in regard to the two proposals that have come to the city, that the Energy Committee has then recommended on to council, that council, and council already acted on the one from Core Electric, and you haven't acted yet. I didn't doze off, did I? You haven't acted yet on the Guzman one.
That's correct. That's the next.
Okay, that's on the agenda tonight. I just wanted to mention that, I think the city, we will all learn a lot from each one of those reports when they come back. And I don't have in my head, maybe, Ryan, you do, as far as when we expect to hear back from Core Electric, and then how many days? I think it's 100 days that Guzman asked for, but...
Yeah, so Core was approved at the first meeting in January, and they requested up to 120 days. And Guzman, if they're approved tonight, they've requested 100 days.
So it goes into roughly the February, March timeframe?
February, March timeframe, yes.
Thanks. One thing I wanted to say, my own opinion, is that I think we will learn a lot from these two reports that come back, but we do, I think as a city, have to recognize that they're not responding to a standard RFP from the city. So we don't know quite what we're going to get. We probably can assume that each one of those reports that comes back will be as much to the benefit of the writer of the report, Core Electric, and then Guzman, as to anyone else. So we just don't know yet. Will that be enough information? And then I don't mean to exclude Black Hills in my comments too, because I think when Black Hills meets with the committee, we'll either have a proposal, or a proposal for a proposal, and I don't want to speak for John and Black Hills, but it's not that we're only looking at Core and Guzman, but certainly, you know, what Black Hills approach to the city will be present and into the future. So I just think we need to be aware that we may not have an apples-to-apples-to-apples comparison. We'll see what we get. I think we'll learn a lot, but we may also still have a lot of work to do to figure out what the city needs to do moving forward. And for some of us in the community, you know, certainly when I founded Canyon City's Energy Future back almost four years ago, our goal has always been to try to find how, find out how we can achieve lower-cost electricity for residents and for businesses in the community. That's always been the goal, continues, at least from my point of view, and I'm sure some others, to be the goal. If there's a way... If there's a way to reduce those electric bills, and, you know, one of the slides illustrated that differential between the statewide average for residential rates and what we pay to Black Hills. So we're all learning a lot. I think we will continue to learn a lot in the process, and hopefully get some good information back from the various entities that will help us guide our direction into the future. So that's, that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you. And thank you for that report, Kirk. That was, that was well done. And so now we're ready. The Energy Committee did receive a letter from Guzman Energy, express, expressing interest in conducting a feasibility study. And that is before us now in Resolution 30, Resolution Number 30, series of 2021, titled "A Resolution Approving the Proposal from Guzman Energy to Conduct a Feasibility Analysis to Determine the Feasibility and Practicality of Development of a Municipal Utility." That letter has been included in our packet. That was received November 17th. And, Ryan?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to clarify for council and just remind council, there, there was a proposal sent earlier in the year from Guzman Energy, which had a $200,000 price tag attached to it. It was no charge to the city, as long as we went with Guzman Energy, but if we went with a different direction, that, you know, we'd be on the hook for that $200,000. This new proposal is a no-charge, you know, analysis for the city. So they are looking at doing the analysis that is outlined in the packet, at no additional charge to the city, similar to the proposal that we received from Core.
Any comments or questions from council?
I got one question.
Yes, Frank.
Based on the administrator's statement. There will be, the way you stated, you said there will be no additional charges. So we're being charged something right now?
So I, I didn't want to make it sound like it was free. Guzman would be picking up the costs, but there's no charges to the city.
Okay, but there are charges, but the city is not assuming any of those charges.
Yeah, Guzman is paying for, for this analysis.
Okay, well, like I say, I just want to make sure, just the way this statement came from you, it, it made me think that we're, we're paying some money out for something, and I don't want the city paying anything out for anything other than those folks doing their own study at their own cost.
Yep, I, I just wanted to make it clear that it, it does cost money to do these studies, we're just not getting charged for it.
Another, another way to say that, Administrator Stevens, is that, that the creation of our Energy Franchise Committee has resulted in the city receiving approximately $400,000 in studies for free. It's essentially another way to look at that. So with that, I'm open to a motion.
Mayor Protam and council, I move to approve Resolution Number 30, series of 2021.
Second.
We have a motion in the section, second. Any additional discussion?
I just have a comment. I just want to thank the Energy Committee for being here tonight, and all of you guys' hard work. Emily and, and Carol, you guys have kind of led the charge on this. And Doug and Kirk, you guys have definitely stepped up and put in a lot of effort. So thank you guys for coming tonight, and I appreciate the presentation.
And I would, I would just add to that, that the, the primary author of the, of the interim report that we have in our packet was Kirk. And so just to make that acknowledgement. So we're, I believe we're ready for a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Harkes?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Protam-Hamrick?
Aye.
And with that, we move to the final item on our agenda, which is introduction and adoption by title only of Resolution 31, series of 2021, entitled "A Resolution of the City of Canyon City, Colorado."
And this is to increase the salary ranges for 2022. And we have Ivy Morris and Tammy Nordike on the phone to give a presentation.
As part of the compensation and classification study, it was determined that in order for us to continue to be competitive in the market, that we needed to adjust our ranges every year. This is part of our second phase in, in that compensation classification study. We are not increasing the rate as much as CPI is. Right now, CPI is trending at like 3.7%, and we are doing 1.5%. We are still, our lowest range will still be above minimum wage, so we, we feel that we will be fine with our seasonal or any other position that are in, that are in that lower range. Ivy, do you have something to add?
Nope, I think you covered it all, Tammy, thank you.
One, one part of that strategy and why this is important, so Tammy mentioned the CPI at 3.7%. On an annual basis, the state of Colorado raises the unemployed, or not the unemployment, the minimum wage by a certain percentage every year. So in order to keep up and make sure that we don't have compression within the salary ranges, part of this strategy is to try and keep pace to the extent that we can with what is happening at the state level with minimum wage. And that, that's what this increase is really intended to do, is to, to make sure that we're not losing too much ground and causing compression issues as it compares to minimum wage.
And so as we make that analysis, do we, do we look at the percentage that the state has used for their coming budget year?
We, we do. And Tammy, you're going to have to remind me exactly what that percentage is. It's, they're not using the full CPI range this year. It was approved just recently, and I believe it was, was about 2.5%.
I would have to defer to Ivy on that. I know she was following those meetings. I did not hear that. I can, see if I can find it on the state website to see what percentage they were, they were doing.
Now, the last time I looked, it hadn't been posted, but we can search really quick to see if that's been updated.
Yeah, what, what was proposed in September, I believe, was what was finally approved So what, our 1.5% is less than what was being proposed for 2022.
So effective January 1, 2022, minimum wage for the state of Colorado will increase to $12.56 from $12.32. Let me see what that percentage is. That's approximately a 1.95% increase. So we're slightly below that. But our minimum of our ranges were already above minimum wage, so we're still allowing some growth there.
Thank you for that. Any further questions or comments from council? Then I would call for a motion.
Mayor Protam and council, I move to approve Resolution 31, series of 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and two seconds. Any further discussion? Thank you, council. I'll call for a vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Harkes?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Protam-Hamrick?
Aye.
And with that, I don't believe we have any other business to come before us. And we do have, our next regular city council meeting is scheduled for January 4th, so everyone have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and we'll see you then. This meeting is adjourned.